Okay, I'd like to call these special reading of the Hiving ISD 701 School Board to Order. It's been rescheduled because the last one was lack of a quorum. It's March 15th, 2023 at 3:30 daylight savings time. I'd like to welcome everybody here. With that being said, we'll move to item two, Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you will wish.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With that, we move to item three, Motion to Approve the Agenda.
All move.
Parted by Director Polter or supported by Director McGlaughlin, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 A four same sign. Motion carried, thank you. That will move to item four, Motion to Approve the Consent of Change.
Some.
Support. Moved by Director Nyberg, supported by Director Polter, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
A four same sign. Motion carried, thank you. Item five, Public Comment, is there anything there Director Nyberg?
Nothing, no.
Okay, none. With that, we move to personnel. Normally, the superintendent would do this and he and the business manager and willing and drawn person are in Minneapolis trying to get some funding for the school. So I'll be reading the rest of the agenda. Item six, Personnel, Item A, Motion to Accept the Registration from Crystal Hope, People's Support Assistant, High School, effective March 10th, 2023.
All move.
Support moved by Director Polter or supported by Director McGlaughlin, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 A four same sign. Motion carried, thank you. With that, we move to item seven, Administrative Reports, anything from the directors?
Just one little thing that's, there's a news again today, the state legislature's like that close to passing free lunches for all kids K through 12. Post passed it, Senate passed it, they've just got some simple languages to work out. So it should be on the governor's desk, hopefully really has to be.
Nice.
And fully funded for at least two years, which is really the same thing.
It's a big deal.
It is.
Thank you.
Way too many, especially elementary school teachers that are experiencing little kids coming to school hungry, they're more upset, more concerned about eating and about learning. And it's just, this is gonna, this could be a real game changer for a lot of kids that just don't have that opportunity.
And particularly when parents have a difficult time filling out a free and reduced lunch forms, so just moving that out of the way hopefully will be a good thing.
For some people, it's pride and there's just that stigma with being on the free lunch program for kids. It's embarrassing for them, especially when you get a little bit older. So this is a real game changer, I think, for a lot of kids. It's a long time overdue.
Yes.
Director, you want?
Yeah, so I just wanna thank the group that made the Parenting in a Digital Age Program available last week. I went in the evening presentation and it was very enlightening and presented in an amazing way. And I thought I heard that it was gonna be available electronically with passwords. So I encourage anybody that has a chance to watch it and get in contact with one of the administrators if it's not posted, I haven't looked, but that was amazing.
Thank you.
Yeah, and secondly, if Director Gavardi wants to jump in, we had a world's best workforce meeting this past Monday and I'm just so impressed. The group that they're targeting to improve is the spend subset of our school district and that's about 25% of our students, so that's a huge number. And just the thoughtful consideration of goal setting and making it measurable and making sure that we're accurately measuring the goals in addition to, you know, putting thought into how we're gonna improve their performance. It's just very impressive, I think.
Yeah, I find it pretty remarkable about how engaged that group is. And it is, you can hear and see the care factor behind it. It's not just, let's just set this, just to set it, check the box and get it off our list. But they're really all, you know, working towards that same goal, but I think it was Mrs. Escoli, is that who you're saying? How she brought up the point of, you know, when it comes to these tests, it isn't just the multiple choice. So when it is drag here and do this, or multiple choice, or, you know, across and put your line or however it is, it isn't just A through C and multiple choice. And I think that sparked some conversation in that too. And just hearing everybody's ideas, it's great because they can all bounce that off and it seems like it's common ground, common goal.
And I think the interesting component, you know, when they talked about measuring, so for example, reading scores and math scores, I don't remember which of the teachers brought up, but then sometimes, you know, like recognizing the need for accommodations because if a student maybe is not excelling in reading or at where they should be, they still have to read to take math test. So like what should we be doing, what can we be doing, what are we doing to make sure we're measuring and testing their math ability and their reading skills aren't getting in the way of their math achievement? So it's just, it's just a really good committee.
Yes.
For sure. Did they talk about special, did they talk about special at the early childhood level though? At all?
I think they had, they had staff from all of, and is it Mrs. Finko? Is she from the early childhood?
Yes. Sisco?
Finko?
Taylor Finko. Oh, Taylor, yeah.
Yeah, so she, she was representing that, that part.
And they did some revised goals and I know they targeted those goals by each group. So they have different goals, measurable goals for the academic area and the age group.
And they do let, you know, the Lincoln, the elementary, the high school, everybody speak to their, to their grades, to their category because it is different and there is different needs, so.
Right, so that's good. I know that there's a huge need in the early childhood more than ever, so I'm just hoping that we're taking care of it. Sounds clear.
Very good, so interesting. Student Director, Aiden, oh, did you have something else?
No.
Okay.
All right. There are a couple things. So registration is done, they're both registered, they're classes, so they're working on the measure, the math schedule for all of that. The screenplay is a full swing. I heard it's going pretty good from what this student is saying. The speech is still going on. I think that's the, that basketball, I think is still going on right now for winter scientific sports. Most of the springs sports started on Monday, so 13th. That's baseball, softball, grassing golf.
This past Monday?
Yeah.
Tennis, right.
Tennis, sorry, I think there's a meeting coming up for tennis.
And I think it's just captain's practice, isn't it, Joe? Or is it real practice with the coach?
Oh, it's real.
It is?
Yeah, Pittsville practices for those four. And tennis, I think is, this Friday, there's a meeting, I think, for tennis. I have to check with Mrs. Corr for that. May Days is coming up, May 1st to 5th. I think that's like another, like Jack and Jeffrey, like just up date type week. There's gonna be students versus teachers, I think it's volleyball. So there could be a bunch of like student teams and whoever wins out of the students gets to play with teachers. Prom is coming up in that same week, I forget the day.
May 6th.
May 6th, yep. May 6th is prom, that is at the Do U nightclub, I think. I think that's where prom is at.
That'd be nice.
Mr. Casey's doing a career achievement. I'm not exactly sure on the dates because I didn't write both down.
I saw a sign coming in, but I didn't.
All kids will be tested April, like the MCAs and start testing. So I hope that goes good for those kids. The danger of social media presentation last Friday was pretty good. He was a super cool guy, he did, he was a magician too. So he did some magic tricks and really opened, opened your eyes on how much screen time everybody had and how far along social media is going. Today, Fear Academy took seven students to an electrical maintenance course. That was today, I think it was 11 to like 1.5, I thought was today. Bootark Cafe, 9th through 12th grade is on Friday, this Friday. Choir Concert is on March 20th at 7:30. And the last thing is yearbooks are almost sold out, there are 27 left.
I don't charge your books though. How much do they cost someone? Well, that's not too far.
Something like that. It's right around there.
How much?
Like 70, 75, somewhere around there.
What the hell?
How much is yours, John? Five bucks. A pirate, so it's like a scroll?
Thank you, Aiden. With that, we move to item C, Any Committee Reports. Hearing none, we'll move to item eight, Administrative Business, I see none there. Oh, Public Directors, Joel and Curtis.
Good afternoon. I'd like to thank the board chair and directors for this opportunity to talk to you. Brief technology update. Before I start, what I was gonna talk about though, as Director Polter, you mentioned the free and reduced lunch and there's always the other side of the coin. So almost all of the funding that the district does is based on formulas and whether that's our budget or whether it is grants. In the technology department, we have the E-Rate program. It is all factored on a percentage of free and reduced lunch enrollments. So as the lunches become free and there's even less incentive for, for parents to fill out those forms, that is going to look at, demographically, it'll make us look like we don't have as many families that qualify for the free and reduced program of the past and it's gonna affect our funding. So, don't wanna be a downer, but there's always the other side of the coin.
So Joel, I mean, is that something we should be working with Superintendent Aldrich on? I mean, like I feel like somebody needs to.
Yes, the legislation, you know, the legislators know that, you know, our, our technology groups, we have lobbyists on there as well, we bring it up, supernominations have been bringing it up. But if you watch the legislation, you know what you're dealing with.
What is the name of the funding that you get?
I get a program called E-Rate, which is a telecommunications. If you all look at your phone bills, you'll see a bunch of taxes and one of them is probably gonna say something like Universal Service Fund. So those funds are, it used to be, back when I was a kid, it was to make long distance phone calls less expensive in rural areas. But since that's kind of changed now, they've used that same program now to fund internet access for schools and libraries. So let's say our monthly bill for internet access is a thousand dollars a month. We apply for E-Rate funding and they look at our, our formula, our free and reduced lunch rate, we have a 70% discount on our hardware bill. So instead of paying a thousand dollars, we pay 300. So if our free and reduced lunch numbers go down because people aren't submitting the paperwork, maybe our free and reduced lunch numbers are 40% and now instead of paying $300 a month, we're paying 600 a month. And that's just my department, that's like special programs, everything's gone that way.
Why couldn't they change and go to the demographics of the area of the district? Because they can get the demographics, they can get the income.
That's the irony, the government that's asking for this information already has it.
That's easy, that's easy.
That's, that's a question for your politicians.
So that's what they should be doing for school districts. Well, and I even think in athletics, didn't Superintendent Aldrich?
Free and reduced lunch for activities fees, yes, we did do discounts to families based on that, so.
But they have to fill out the forms and they're never gonna get all the people like you said. So we have to try to work with our, with our legislature. Yeah. And our elected officials, if they're gonna change the free and reduced lunch, to try to get them to rekey all this other stuff. Because I even think, when we had conversations about cooperative sports agreements and we were talking about the VCA one, right, and figuring out the total enrollment, they reduced one of the districts by a proportion of the free and reduced lunch. So like as far as the athletic classifications. As far as what they pass or? No, it was having to do with the tier that they fit into, A, double A. Oh, yeah. So.
They count all the VCA as students here.
Right, but what does that have to do with free and reduced lunch? But they took a percentage, I think, based on, based on the number of free and reduced lunch. They reduced that student count. So, and I don't know the exact.
Director Nyberg, to answer your question, the reason that it affects all these programs is because it is a standard way for these programs to determine the economic need in the area, right? Like Anoka Hennepin versus Hiving.
Yeah, Edina.
Right, exactly. So it's a standard, it's a federal program. It's a baseline and so it's just a way to get a gauge for all these programs, whether they're local or state or federal, it's a standardized way to get a gauge on what kind of economic climate is in the area.
Yeah. And like, and like we said.
That's why it's used for so many programs because it's just, yeah.
And like we said, they know it, they have it. So what, the schools shouldn't have to do anything, they should have it. It should be held harmless if they change the free and reduced lunch.
Make that happen, Kathy.
Yeah, yeah. What?
Make that happen.
Okay, yeah, no problem.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go switch gears now back to, back to what I'm here for. So today, I wanted to talk to the board about cybersecurity, that's kind of a hot topic today in education. You're probably aware that ARC has recently undergone an attack. They were hit February 5th and they still have not fully recovered. So just to put this, this kind of an impact in perspective, it's more than a month that their systems have been affected. Hiving is one of seven school districts that is put at the top of the list to get connectivity back. We connected our first computer to their new system on Thursday and we did the rest of the business office on Monday. So that's how long it's taken for them to recover. And that's just because we're in the first seven. There are many districts in the region that haven't even connected at all yet. So these, these attacks have a big impact to the organization that gets hit.
Can you remind us what we get from ARC as far as data or what, you know, what's our relationship?
They host our financial and HR information, some payroll budgets. Like when, when Alex is entering a budget, he's actually talking to a computer at ARC.
So do you know, I know when I talked to Alex about it, there was the likelihood that ARC was not gonna be able to process our payroll?
Our staff have been driving to Duluth for the, for basically the month and doing things on site at ARC's offices to.
Report.
And yes, we did get payroll and we're paying the bills and all of those things.
But you're having to go to Duluth.
But they had to drive to Duluth. Well, as of Monday, they don't have to.
Thank you.
Other schools have to still drive there also.
Yeah, it's a big deal.
So yeah, you know, cybersecurity is a big buzzword because it's, well, many factors. Schools are getting attacked more frequently. Several schools in our region, in fact, I would, we're close to saying most schools in our region have been hit. Insurance requirements have been increased and insurance requirements are increasing because as these attacks become more prevalent and more places are making claims, they're paying out more. So they're putting higher restrictions on people to get insurance for cyber incidents. Every school across the nation is struggling with these things right now. In fact, Minneapolis schools, they were hit in February, they had systems out for multiple weeks, they had a million dollar ransom that was asked and they still don't know the extent of the data that the attackers have gotten, so. So let me talk a little bit about our past practices, what's been new, relatively new practices and what we see going forward. As you know, I've been here for a long time and cybersecurity has always been something that, you know, has been forefront in my mind as I'm implementing technology. So we've done a lot of things historically, even before this became the new, the new fad. We've always had backup systems, but more importantly, we test those backups to make sure that they work. We do our best to keep our hardware up to date, our software up to date, we control access to our systems, we control access to the computers and what people can do on them. So we already have some really good procedures in place. And then recently, we've added things like two-factor authentication, so when you log in, you have to have another device that says, yep, this is who I am, you get a text code or something like that that says, yep, it's me. Multi-factor authentication is one of those new things that insurance companies are now requiring. Another thing that we've recently introduced are phishing tests. That's where we send out an email that is designed to look real, but it's really not. And then we can, we can determine if any of our staff have clicked on those emails. So we did a test right before school started without telling anybody what was happening and 85% of our staff clicked on the email that they should not have clicked on, 85%. We had 88 staff members, that's 24%, that actually entered their username and password in a site that they thought was Google, but was not. If that had been a real thing, those, we would have been hit by a ransom or thing because they would have had usernames and passwords. At the end of that, that first test that we did, the software that we're using to do these things scored our district a D minus. Since that time, we've been doing monthly tests and monthly training. We have like little five-minute videos every month that staff have to listen to and do. And we've taken that 85% hit rate down to, it went down to 21%, you know, about halfway through the year and now we're down to 4%. So we've, we've really improved. And just this month, we changed our grade from that D minus to a C. So we are doing better.
They go into 4%, it's only a C?
Yes, so remember, C is average.
Yeah.
I mean, people in school and education forget this, C is average, think everybody should get A. Or did I say that a lot? So some of the new things that we're doing now or that we're in process of doing is working on a crisis response plan related to cybersecurity. Last year, I actually started working on putting a checklist together. This checklist is huge, it was 228 items on this list that I've got so far. Many of these things have to be done every year. Just trying to get a feeling for where we are on this project. And one of the items is to create this disaster recovery plan. And I've always had a plan on what we would do if we were attacked in my head, right? But I've never really like formalized it, I've never shared it with the admin team. But we're kind of past that point where I could be the only one who knows what we're gonna do if we're hit. We're at that point now where like ARC, they've been down for a month, Minneapolis Public Schools down for two weeks. Schools that close while they're recovering from cybersecurity events. So I have a draft plan in place now and we're gonna schedule some time with our admin team to review it and kind of get them all engaged on this because it's really everybody's responsibility all the way down to the teachers. So when you think about crisis response plan, the district has a general crisis response plan, right, for armed intruders, tornadoes and things like that. We spent quite a bit of time on it. But the likelihood of us being hit with a cybersecurity attack versus an armed intruder, it's much more likely that we're gonna have a cyber incident. And yet, we don't spend any time as a district talking about it and what we're going to do and how we, how we handle it. To give you an idea of how real this is, we detect about 70 active attacks on our network a day.
Seventy?
Yes. And I would say probably over 95% of them are coming from Russia and China. To put that in perspective, think about, when you think about that armed crisis response plan, think about 70 people just going around to every door in our building and tugging on them to see if they can get in, right? That's what's happening electronically every day. If you think about technology and its reach today in, in schools, phones, email, parent squared communications, internet access, just logging into the computers and getting access to our files, the doors, right? How we enter the school is now controlled by a computer. HVAC, security cameras, fire detection. You look at the systems that we use every day like Power School, our schedules, our grades, our attendance. Transportation, how transportation is managed. Meals, how meals are distributed to who. So we have to look at each of those items and say, well, which of these things need to be in place and up and running in order to safely hold school, right? That's something that we have to look at as a team. So if we get hit by a cyber attack, we already have that mapped out. We don't have to like figure that out the day of. So those are some things that we're working on in the next couple of months. As well as communications, who talks, who talks to who and what do they say and when? How do we maintain business continuity? Like we still have to pay bills in the business office, right? How do we do those things if we don't have access to technology? So we'll have some, we'll sit down with the admin team, we'll go over some of these things and we'll probably come back with some recommendations. We'll probably come back with some recommendations for additional backup systems that are more comprehensive. We'll probably come back with a request for a cyber security audit assessment done by a third party and things like that. So I think the walk away here, I said probably a lot of things that might be scaring you, but we have got a pretty robust system in place right now. We're, we're in better shape than most of the people that I know around the region as far as being prepared for one, as far as reducing the likelihood of us experiencing one to begin with. But there's more work that we can do with this and we're actively working on that, so.
So Joel, with, you said you backup, you have a backup system and tapes?
We have multiple different backup systems.
So do the areas, school districts, do many of you use this, do many of us use the same platforms? So could part of our plan be like, kind of like a hot site type thing if you had to go over to Chisholm or Nashlock if we had to restore one of our systems that we've identified as a key system, a critical system?
You don't really wanna do that because now you are expanding, now I need to know, if I have a backup at Nashlock Schools or Chisholm Schools, I need to trust the Chisholm school is here to keep it secure.
Oh, no, I'm saying we keep our.
I don't.
Backup. No, I'm saying, no, 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 I'm saying we keep our own backups here, but in the event that we had an event, I mean, we would take our tapes and our people and it's just that they're using the same technology so we could load our information on their operating.
We wouldn't need to do that. I'll just simplify and say that wouldn't be something that we would, more than likely we wouldn't need to do that. What I'm talking about with backup systems is like, some of the backup systems that we have right now are backed up to the cloud. What, what I'm talking about with backup systems is like, some of the backup systems that we have right now are backed up to the cloud. And if we were in an attack, an active attack, the very first thing I would do is unplug the cloud. And probably one of the last things I would want to do is connect the internet backup. Which means it's really hard to get access to the backups because they're up there on the internet. So one of the things that I want to do is actually add additional backup systems that we maintain here locally on site. That would be an example of, yes, we have backups. In fact, we have multiple backup vendors. And I've tested them and make sure that they work. Not everything is in the cloud, but some of the stuff is in the cloud. And even Google Documents and stuff like that. There are, there are technologies out there where if we had to disconnect from the internet for multiple days and Pam needed a spreadsheet, well, it's really hard to get her access to that spreadsheet because it's on the internet. But if we had a system on place that had the mirror of what was up on the internet, I could get that spreadsheet to Pam pretty quickly. So those are the things that we're looking to improve.
Does, does ARC also then hold the information? You know, we just talked about spring starting and I know, you know, parents are signing their kids up, paying with credit cards, having that on file. Is ARC also holding that information or is it strictly more of our business information?
More our business information. And even like when we take online payments, like to buy iPad insurance for, again, speaking from my department, we don't hold that information. There, it is very difficult process to get approval to take credit card data. There's a lot of regulations in place there. So we partner with a third party that actually stores that data. We don't.
Okay, so we're not gonna let out anyone's credit card numbers?
Unless somebody's got filed credit card numbers that I don't know about, but not, not through things that we officially didn't know.
But I suppose if they got into our payroll, they could get social security numbers?
Well, that's ARC. I mean, that's, that's what's just happened, right? I can't speak to
So you mean they did get into our payroll?
I can't speak to specifics on what's happened there.
But that's at ARC?
Yep.
And they've been attacked?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think we should go any further than that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't understand it.
I've been involved with it before, yeah.
And Minneapolis Public Schools, when they were attacked in February, they still are, at least what's come out publicly. And so one of the rules when you are under attack is you don't really say, you don't say, you don't discuss it publicly for multiple reasons. And, but like what's been reported publicly with Minneapolis Public Schools is they are still investigating the extent of which the perpetrators have, what act, what data did they get? Did they get social security numbers? Did they get phone numbers? And there are laws in place that if there is a security breach and personal data is, was accessed, that the organization has to report that to each individual. So if ARC has, finds out through investigations that they have social security numbers, you would find out by law because they would, they would be required to notify.
But it didn't affect us paying our, I mean, like how we paid our people was affected, but were we able to keep our payroll, your payroll cycle?
Yes, yes.
There's already been one, at least one.
There's been one.
Yeah, yeah, there's been, like I said, they've been down for a month, so there's been multiple payroll cycles already.
We just did the today's payroll. Kathy and I were down last Thursday, so, but now we should be able to do it here.
Any other questions?
Keep us updated, I'm sure.
Very important and I'm glad that you're on top of it.
Yeah, it's kind of a timely, it was a good topic to talk about now and you have to be a little bit careful how you talk about it because everything you say can be used against you. But I didn't say anything specific, so. All right, thank you. Have a very busy afternoon. I have a kid waiting in my office, so I'm gonna step out.
Something's, the board chair is full. Kick it up your shoulders.
Kirk? All right, I'm up. I'll try to keep it brief.
Thank, thanks Chair and Board for having me present today. I missed initial source presentation back in, around Thanksgiving, but missed, missed that date, so this is my first, first time this year. So I have, I'm gonna share some numbers with you, just kind of community ed numbers and participation numbers, which we're really proud of. First, I want to start by saying thank you to our admin team. We've got such a great, amazing admin team. To get this early learning center up and running, you know, thirty thousand square foot, ten million dollars, it was an undertaking that I couldn't have done alone. So certainly Mr. Oliveridge was there backing us up all the way. Mr. Berg, Taylor Finko, who's our early childhood coordinator. Nathan Luskin Sped, they've been lifesavers, they really have been. It's one of those things that we didn't quite anticipate, you know, going into this, the need that we might have had for Sped's support. Certainly Tyler Glad on the backend of things with construction and being the leader in that. And finally, Joel Anderson in, in the tech department to get that building up and running with all the tech, the computers, cameras, everything that we needed. So just a really good group effort, so. I also wanted to stress the importance of community ed in general. I know I've shared some of these numbers with the board in the past, but since we have a new board member and a student rep, I wanted to share these again too. So in general, community ed program users, they rate the quality of their education in the district higher than non-users. They have more favorable impressions of the superintendent, the business office, and the school board than non-users do. They're more positive about the financial management of the district than non-users of community ed programs. They're stronger supporters of referendums than non-users. And in general, they're more, better informed and have a, look more positively on the district than non-users, community ed users. So some of our, our numbers, since the year began, start with early childhood, since that's kind of the, the hot topic. We've got eighty-seven kids currently enrolled in our school readiness program. We have fourteen in our threes program and seventy-three kids in the fours program. We opened registrations this past Monday for this coming school year. And we essentially filled the threes class already. We opened up another section of threes, half-days, so next year we'll have two half-days. And we have two rooms pretty much full already with the fours program. So just three days open and we're, we're three fours in the way full. Our early childhood family education, which that's for the babies, ones, twos, we've had a hundred and sixty-three enrollments this year. And thirty-four families are taking advantage of our sibling care. So when those parents come with one child, they have another one who's still at home, they can be in the sibling care while they are in class with the one child. And registration open for that as well for next year. We have thirty-seven families signed up so far.
For early childhood education?
Yep. We opened up some open gyms this year on weekends. On Saturdays, we're doing one, one once a month. We've had about ninety people come to those so far this year. Our next open gym is this come on Saturday from ten to twelve, so we'll see how the weather holds up, but it's nice seeing those folks coming and using that new facility. And thanks Tyler Glad, who, in order for us to do that, we need a custodian. Nor there's not custodians in those elementary schools on the weekends, so we have to have someone come in special so we can offer that. We also re-implemented our PF speaker nights. We had our first one last Thursday. We only had about eight people attend, but we hadn't done them in about three years, so might take a little time to get those up and running again. The topic was ADHD and the procedure was Brian Ridgeway, who was our school psychologist. Our next one is gonna be April twenty-seventh. It's Claudia Mecher. She was the, I think, principal over at Assumption for years. And she does one on discipline disobedience and defiance, so. Hopefully that'll be more well-tended than the previous one.
What date is that?
That is April twenty-seventh. At the learning center in our comments area.
And how does the information about those get out, since you were saying the attendance was
We had it on the radio, in the paper, social media, posted posters, we distributed flyers to all the pre-K, K students.
You have one on Facebook, on the Hibbing Schools page?
Yeah.
I missed that.
I think it was that a couple times. Our adults will transition to the next program. There's a handful that's under community ed as a raw adult with disabilities. We've had three hundred and sixteen folks attended our program so far this year. That's our Friday night rec and our bowling. We actually made an effort to, we sent out a mailing, we had sixty-five different group homes in northern St. Louis County, inviting them to our programs. So we've seen kind of a return on that, so. And I'd like to thank Ross Harvey and Key Club. So they've been sending kids over each Friday, we have Friday at rec to help with that program, so. Last one here, our adult and youth enrichment. So so far this year, we've offered forty-four classes with eighty-eight sections. We've had one thousand twenty-seven registrations, so that is pretty good, especially if we're rebounding after COVID. So we're back to perhaps pre-COVID numbers. Or the course of the year, usually right around two thousand, so we still have spring and summer to go. Seventy-five, seventy-seven percent of those registrations occur online, which is up. I think last year we were at sixty-four, around there. And sixteen percent of those registrations were out of district. We're working on our summer program already. We have to get that stuff in by the end of the month in order for May to July, August. So it's amazing how early we have to get that stuff in there. So it's a challenge narrowing down and nailing down our instructors to get us information, but we're currently planning about fifteen to seventeen different course offerings for the summer. So we'll have a full plan. Any questions?
Swimming has come back.
Yep, so I'll shoot for May, if not May, certainly June and July. We have some lifeguards, instructors hired, we just have to do some training with them.
That's great. Kirk, I'm gonna go back to the early learning center
Yep.
and the threes, the fours, and even early childhood education. And I don't want to put you on the spot if you don't have the numbers, but are you getting a sense that we're getting a higher percentage from out of the school district?
So in the threes and fours program, so out of that eighty-seven, there's six out of the district. So not, you know, we've had more in the past, I think historically, but this year not as many. I think because we took more hidden folks, more hidden folks signed up because we do try to give them priority in those programs. In ECFE, twenty-four families out of district in the ECFE program.
Thank you. So it sounds like you've got more three-year-olds for next year than you did this year. You had one class this year?
Yep.
And you'll have two next year?
Yep.
And then our four-year-olds signing up also?
Yep.
And that's every day?
That's all day, every day, yeah. And the three-year-olds are gonna go, oh, half-days every day.
Okay.
Right now, the three-year-olds go half-day, four-days a week.
Yeah.
But we're, we had to shave a little time out there in order to fit a second section in there, so they're gonna go Monday through Friday as well.
And then what's the before and after care hours?
We can drop off anytime, starting at seven-thirty, and that's at free of charge. And then the wrap care at the end of the day, they can stay till five-thirty. But that's for, that's a number, it really dictate by number of staff we can get in this, in the space, so. And we've got about fourteen kids, so fourteen preschoolers, that's a, that's a healthy number.
Or signed up for the
The wrap around the after-school childcare.
For the wrap around?
Yeah. Before care, I don't have those numbers in front of me, but the majority of them could drop off anywhere between seven-thirty and eight.
So is there a charge, Kirk, for the after-school?
There is, yep. Yeah, that's separate from the, the tuition that they pay.
Yeah. So they can come at seven-thirty?
Yep, that's free.
That's free?
Yep, before's free.
But then if they stay after?
If they stay after till five-thirty, yeah.
Extra pay?
Yeah.
And are people signing up for that also?
Yep, so that, that one we have about, we haven't opened that up for next year yet.
Oh, you haven't opened that yet?
Registered, they, they're thinking whether they'd be interested in that.
Okay.
And we've got another twenty, thirty people.
Already saying they're interested?
For the fours, when you say that they're going all day, is, is the feedback pretty good from families about being all day? Or do some of them still request or hope to have a half-day?
Yeah, and so next year, to answer that question, yeah. Next year, we're actually, right now, the threes is a half-day only. But we're gonna allow threes and fours and then a half-day next year. So there are, were a handful of folks like, eh, they're just not ready for all day, every day. So that will be notched for some four-year-olds. We do have some signing up for that already.
Oh, that's good. So they're gonna mix them in?
Yep.
Just mix them together, yeah.
That's a good role model for those threes to see those four-year-olds.
Very good, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Can I have one more question?
Sure.
The open gyms on Saturday, is there a reason why we couldn't have parents or say coaches? I mean, say there's a parent that coaches a youth basketball team as a volunteer. Is there a reason that that parent, I mean, do we have to have a custodian? Isn't, couldn't we have a trusted parent coach?
Right now, the district's policy is if there's someone in the building, there's gotta be a custodian. That's, comes from Rick and from Tyler.
Okay.
Like, so say even on the weekends, say theater wants to get in here and rehearse.
Yeah.
If they want to come in on a Sunday at four o'clock, they can't, because I have to store it in here at that time.
Is that in the union contract, you know, or? Do I have to do it with insurance and liability?
It's a liability.
Yeah, but I've had a lot of community people say, you know, my husband coaches as a volunteer, coaches basketball team. He can't take his, he can't get into a gym to practice with his kids. It doesn't seem right to me. I, I don't know.
There's other solutions, I think.
I mean, we trust him to coach this team. He's a volunteer.
Once you start giving out those keys in that access to the building, we've got so many people.
Went to the card key system.
Yes. We had, we had literally hundreds of keys out before and people are wandering in and out of the building constantly.
But we have camera. I mean, we can see who's coming.
But there's scheduling too that goes out there.
Yeah, but if a gym's sitting there empty, I, I don't like, I, that's just my
The high school is almost always
What, what do you think, Mike?
I think this is a problem the schools have for years. And any programs that want to be available on Saturday and Sundays, they can't because it's a negotiating tool you have to have with the custodians.
Well, you, so you think it is on their union contract or no?
I've always thought it was, yeah.
I don't think it is. I think it's our policy that we are able to change. That's what I think.
I don't know.
And I, I agree. It's been a, it's been a problem and I've heard about it for years and years. We can't get into the gyms. They sit there empty on the weekends.
But it has to be cleaned.
Huh?
It has to be cleaned.
Don't you trust a coach to say, all candy wrappers, put them in the garbage? You are not leaving this a mess.
Food stuff left out.
Food, whatever. We don't trust these coaches, but yet we take them as volunteers.
Trust me.
I don't think it has to do
Talked to the janitors.
I'm sure you have a point, John.
Yeah, and they said, boy, what a
What a mess. So then we, they don't clean up after themselves is what
A lot of people do and a lot of people, or some do and some don't, I should say.
Well, then you punish everyone because of the ones that leave a mess. But once again, you punish all the good people that want to be in there for the ones that leave the candy wrappers and the food and it's just not right.
Look at it again. Maybe things have changed with the key curts, but I don't know. It's been like every year, something like that or something.
For a public school, we should have our gyms available to anybody at any time.
That's, that's right.
Sign up in advance so you can schedule.
Correct.
Same thing with the weddings, yeah. They have to have a janitor.
That's a little, that's a little different than taking five little eight-year-olds into a gym. I, I don't know, to shoot baskets. What's wrong with that?
Could be a legal thing. We could re, we can relook at the policy or the contract. Contracts are coming out, so.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kirk. With them, we'll look item eight, there's none there. And then we'll go to item nine, discussion item, it says none there, but I have one item that requires some. Through all what I know about this, and there's not much for discussion. IRRV reached out to Chisholm. There's money in the collaboration fund. I think it's between eight and nine million dollars. That they requested that Hibbing and Chisholm get together and collaborate on things. I don't know what all the details are to that, but we have to do it if we want that, the funding. And we're looking into a facilitator. Tom Watson, the one we had before, when I discussed this with Chisholm board chair, they're fine with that. To submit a proposal to us because he's done this in the past and he's working on it now. So then we can see what he wants to do, when he would like to start. And how many people if he would want the board chairs or the superintendents or I think it's gonna come down to like the board chair, two board members from each. That was one of the discussions. And also, this will be, what I'm told, is no charge to the districts with the facilitator or meeting costs or meals or whatever, he said, IRRV would be taking care of that. And there's, no timeline has been set, established at this time. It's still in discussion stages. And we will furnish updates as it comes through. We can do that in form of any emails. Not against any open meeting stuff or whatever, we'll keep it posted. And it's more or less for like facilities, academics, maybe like there was a, for education. It's not for personnel sharing, that's out of the question. They're not gonna do it, so.
So IRRV approached Chisholm on this, is that what you said?
Yeah, and have been approached in the past by, then too, Rick and I went over to Nashua, Kewa, too. They, there's a fund set up for that, to see what can be done.
Well, they had done that with Nashua a while ago, or, but, or when?
A couple of years ago they did that.
Yeah.
But now I think somebody's doing that, Nashua and Grand Rapids, so.
Chair, is part of it because the Chisholm building project is dependent on IRRV funding? And in order to have IRRV funding, it requires collaboration? Is that?
It's kind of.
The basis?
That makes sense.
I think Chisholm was commenting on some of that money coming regardless. So, no, they said, Michael Corby said, you get in touch with Hibbing and see what the, that's all.
And I'm sure you can answer that, but my question is, they contacted Chisholm first, correct? For Chisholm to contact us to see who to collaborate with them? That how it went?
I believe.
Instead of asking us to go.
I believe he told them to consolidate.
That's, that was the right way to go, wasn't it?
They want the money.
To make Chisholm talk to us. You know what? My opinion, strictly my opinion. It has to be sincere and genuine. And in my opinion, it should not be about money, it should be about what's best for the kids in the area. Not about Hibbing, not about Chisholm. And I'm gonna give you an example, okay? Because I was caught off guard last Wednesday when I came to the social media presentation. I ran into an individual who knows this school district very well, who knows the healthcare climate very well. And they caught me and they said, what is this? We're not offering a CNA nursing program in the school. And we all know.
At the college?
In the school.
Well, this one.
We used to have, I mean, we've always had it in the school.
And we know that this board has had conversation about keeping kids in our school rather than doing PSEO, right? And I'm like, well, wait a minute, I just heard they were doing that, right? And they also talked about a NATFIS too, but I'm gonna focus on, on the nursing program. Because as adults, I think we all have been at a point in life where we're saying, oh my, there's a healthcare worker shortage, right? Like, there's not enough people working in long-term care facilities, assisted living facilities. Well, many of those workers come through that CNA program, right? So that bothered me. So I got on the phone with Superintendent Aldrich and I said, we're not offering this CNA program? There's a lot of kids in Hibbing that have taken it. And he said to me, or in Hibbing and Chisholm, yeah. And he said to me, well, I don't think there was enough interest to make the program a go. So that was last Wednesday. And I heard from him on Monday or Tuesday that he, Principal Sakura, got on the telephone or whatever with Principal Morrison from Chisholm. And between the two districts, they've come up with a creative way to offer a CNA program. And to me, like, that's what collaboration's all about. And it, and it needs to be, in my opinion, not just because they wanna get money. We need to do what's best for the kids in this area.
What this will help.
But consolidation is different than collaboration. We're talking about a collaboration and really it's a, it needs to be a win-win for both Hibbing, you know, for both of us, not just us, not just them, for everybody involved.
They shouldn't get all that money and we shouldn't get all, it's there for us to collaborate and come up with stuff.
But that nursing that you mentioned, Renee had just talked about that.
That's why it caught me off guard.
And, you know, and then to think too, the college, you know, tying that into the college then after those, when the kids graduate. I mean, Hibbing's got a great nursing program, so you want those kids to stick around here.
Well, John, as you think of things, because this is gonna be forthcoming, so, and it's, would be a good start to, so.
Well, we have, you know, we have had the CNA for many years.
They're dying, they're actually dying, literally.
For CNA, yes. They can't find people. Right. And what I meant, like, what I, what I said to Rick in my conversation was, you know what? Like, think about like together, how much more robust, maybe we could make it, whether it's with the equipment, whether it's with the experience, maybe we can do something to try to encourage more young people to take that CNA course so we can get them into healthcare facilities where we as adults that are making these decisions are recognizing there's a shortage, right? Like, it all fits together, it's not, we just need to work together for the betterment of our area, for the betterment of our young people.
Like what you just said a little bit about, it's not about the money, but.
No.
It, it isn't, but it is. Because there's only so many dollars to go around, and if you spend it efficiently, you're gonna have a heck of a lot more done.
You can't do one without the other.
Right. If we want our kids to succeed, we have to start working together and sharing programs. We just don't have the numbers here to provide.
And we shouldn't have to be forced into it, but this is.
Well, it'd be a great avenue for our career academy to work with Chisholm and us here and stop letting or, not stop. Well, you all know how I feel about our, all our students going to the college. And I think that's where CNA program got destroyed because everybody went over there and said, I'm here.
Well, not, did they? Because we were using their instructor. The years back, I mean, I was involved when I worked at the college.
They went out of our building to that.
But I think it started. But it started when their, the HCC instructor was coming to the high school and having the class. And that's how it started, and that's how I assumed it was remaining. But maybe they started going over to the college. But I thought initially, we didn't have a CNA course here. But then so many students were leaving here to go over there. Somehow we brought a program here, Mary Warner.
Could it be that we were getting paid when the program was here, that went to this school? Maybe the college was missing out on getting their pay to have it here instead of over there.
I, I don't know, I mean, Sherif Kuff was the teacher.
We can get to that.
The details, but, I mean. But the same thing with the NATFIS, right? Like, to me, a NATFIS too, if you're going into anything science or medical, like, there isn't a reason in the world a school district like Hibbing should not be offering a NATFIS too. That's, that's like core. And I think we need to go down the list and together build a plan for the kids.
Make a list so we can use it on one of our first meetings to show we have some stuff.
Is there a timetable on this, John?
Not yet, we're, we're waiting for this proposal to come in, it should be next week.
Is that coming from IRRV or DRC?
Tom Watson.
And for whatever reason, I appreciate the Chisholm School Board and the members of the Chisholm School Group that are at least willing to sit down and talk. And for whatever reason, it should have, in my opinion, been earlier, but. It would be nice, I mean, Hibbing has, I don't know, maybe 10 times as many as the word, I'm looking for the classes, the electives, okay? In here in high school that Chisholm student has, but, you know, so it'd be really nice if our high schools were one high school.
We can use some of that stuff on our own too, but this is.
But I'm saying, Hibbing has a lot and Chisholm does not have a lot. And I don't know if all the Chisholm parents even know that.
Well, we'll, after this meeting comes up.
But I also think if, you know, down the road, if we were to consolidate, I think the best, Hibbing has to give too. You know, we can't just swallow them up.
See, consolidation, that's not to be mentioned.
I know, I'm not, I'm not gonna mention, I'm saying it just here. But if we were to consolidate, what would be really nice is if we agreed as Hibbing to send our sixth through eighth graders that way.
I think we're putting a part.
No, I'm just saying, no, I'm agreeing, okay? Six to eight that way and we'll take nine to 12 this way. And all the kids would benefit. It goes right back to what Kim was saying. It'd be the best thing for all the kids.
We've been over that a hundred times.
But why don't they hear it?
We can't answer that, but this is our next.
I don't understand. And I don't wanna swallow them. I believe Hibbing has to give also, we have to give too.
It's a given thing.
We have to sacrifice too.
Money's a given thing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair.
We've got it.
Hold on, hold on.
Meeting's adjourned at 4:30 PM. Thank everybody for coming.